We like to welcome everyone, I'm so sorry we are late because of me. Today is Tuesday December 3rd it is 5:34pm. Welcome to the municipal council regular meeting. Our elected officials with us today are councillor Travis Hoban, councillor Craig Christensen, councillor Rachel Whipple, myself Catrice McKay, councillor Gary Garrett, councillor Becky Bogdan and councillor George Handley. Today's prayer will be provided by KCDCO and the pledge of allegiance by Craig Christensen.
Our Father who art in heaven, we come before thee at the start of this civic meeting, grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy and the opportunities we have to be active participants in the governance of our communities and we acknowledge thy hand in the well-being of our communities and seek thy guidance as we make decisions. Bless the council, our elected officials, and all those involved in the decision-making process, that they may be inspired to make decisions that will affect the well-being of all. And then we may be a welcoming community and love those around us. And these blessings we pray for this night in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Casey.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Alright, our first item is a presentation of the CAPS Student Project promoted the new Provo City website. And I've seen this, I've seen this website where it's at so far and I'm very excited about it.
Thank you. So this is the fourth year we have worked with the Center of Advanced Professional Services to get high school students professional experience. This year, we had a group of three students who worked with our media team to develop some social media reels to kind of get the word out about our our new upcoming website and app that we're all very excited and working very hard on. Unfortunately, I don't believe any of them are here today, but we do have the reels ready for you.
Hey man, you going to the festival tonight?
How was I supposed to know there was a festival tonight?
Haven't you heard? Provo's got a new website. It tells you about everything fun in the city.
Really?
Yeah. They even have a new app. It's like having Provo in your pocket.
Wow, that's convenient. Let me download it.
I've got such a headache. Paying my power bill is so frustrating and confusing.
What? Why don't you just use the new website, Provo website?
They have a website?
Yes, and they also have a mobile app. It's like having Provo in your pocket.
See? Don paid for.
And you said none of them were here today, right?
No, it doesn't look like any of them are here today.
Well, for all the citizens here, we do have a way better website coming out that you'll be very excited about, and it has an app.
Yes, there is an app. We are very excited. We're working very hard on it and it should be coming soon.
Okay, thank you. Alright, as indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following presentation of the items, but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, up to 15 minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comments on matters that do not appear on the agenda, but are limited to topics regarding municipal business or within municipal council purview. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to no other requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium. Those participating on Zoom will need to use the raise hand feature to indicate they wish to comment. The chair may choose to alternate between in-person and online commenters. Please begin your comments by stating your name and your city of residence and you have two minutes to speak. Is there anyone who has, wants to do open comment? Come right up. We just need your name and your city of residence, please. Now, this is not about something specific to our agenda?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Louis Marzabetti Garza, and I had attended your work meeting earlier. And I just noted a couple of things that I thought, well, I'm going to be a little snarky about some of the things, but then being in Provo, being in Utah, I was a bit overwhelmed with another thought process. If I could let you know that I walked across the street, Provo was founded by pioneers in 1849 or 46. And if you could all just think to yourselves and take note, I've come from far. I'm Louis Marzabetti Garza. I am homeless, but not hapless, and I have come from Miami. God works in mysterious ways. Matthew 3:3, Matthew 5:5, Matthew 7:7. "I shall prepare for thee away; the meat shall inherit the earth; the hearts of the children will turn to their parents, and the parents to their children." I have traveled through a gift throughout the states and I have gone to different city council meetings, and you are all an exemplar of what I have seen in the consequence. And I know I have very little time, but it is full circle because some of you may have recalled on August 23rd, 2010, how you lost two Provo nights from here at an airplane accident in Nepal. That was my older sister, Lucy Zabetti, who worked for Scott Lewison Peterson, I believe. Since that day, I have been on a journey and I have come full circle. And come January 25th, when there is a new administration coming in, I urge all within the sound of my voice, let me be your tinkerbell. Please look at your patriarchal blessings. Now is the time we have all prayed for.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Alright, we're gonna move on to our business. Next action item, an implied motion on ordering submitting the zoning map classification of real property journey located at 577 East 400 South from a one-family residential zone to the low-density residential zone in the Mazer neighborhood. This will be presented by Mary Barnes.
Perfect, thank you. We already went through this in the work session, so I'll just quickly touch over a few points. Like Councillor McKay said, this is at 577 East 400 South in the Mazer neighborhood. It's from R16 to LDR. It meets the future land use in the general plan in the Mazer neighborhood plan. The Planning Commission did recommend approval for this rezon on November 13th, and the purpose of this is for the property owner, he wants to build two attached single-family homes or townhomes in the backyard of an existing single-family home. There are similar residential uses in the area, including existing single-family homes with other units in the backyard, that kind of thing, as well as multifamily just down the street. And this project is, the concept plan shows it being accessed from the alleyway in the back, although it's still at the concept stage. Actual, the actual configuration of the site would come through with a project plan if this gets approved. And then we are recommending, staff is recommending approval on this item to help meet the general plans, the general plan goals of the area, and also to increase housing diversity in, in the Mazer neighborhood. Any questions for me or the applicant on this one?
Any questions for Mary or the applicant? Alright, thanks, Mary. Councillor Whipple.
One question that, that we had was about renting the units as opposed to having the units to be for sale for homeowner occupation. I'm not doing great today, guys, sorry. But I'm wondering if the owner is here and would be able to answer questions about who he would anticipate living in it, if he would be selling these units?
Yeah, of course. His name's Daniel Franco. He's the property owner.
Hi, Daniel. Welcome.
So I don't have any plans of selling the units in the near future. I was kinda, the plan was just to kinda keep it in my family for my kids, to kinda have them all in one place, hopefully if they don't kill each other, I guess, I don't know. But it's, but I can't for certain say that, I mean, I may want to sell in the future, I don't know. But as it sits right now, because of the zoning and the square footage, I'm not able to subdivide it into different lots and then sell, which that was kind of my, that was a thought, but we don't have the adequate square footage to do that.
Do you live there now?
No, I don't.
Would you live there after doing this?
Maybe. I mean, I'll be closer to work for everybody, so maybe, yeah.
Okay.
I lived there before, but then I moved, but yeah, I'm always open to.
Yeah. When you say you want this for your family, is this more of creating like an investment for your family that, that they would be able to draw on in the future so that your children would have some source of financial stability? Not necessarily that they would have a place to live?
More so either way, I guess.
Yeah, that makes sense. But you did ask about subdividing it first?
I did, yes. That was the initial plan.
Okay. Mary, I've got a question for you. So I was looking at the parcel directly to the east of this one, well, the three parcels. So his lot is .29 acres. And next to it, the northernmost one is .06 acres. The middle one is .08 and the bottom one is .15. So those three together, not to the west, to the east, to the east of it.
Okay.
Those three parcels together equal one parcel the same size as his. Is the reason that his property couldn't be divided into one or two was that there's no street access?
So the reason why we couldn't have done, we didn't allow this to go through as like a flag lot or something is because a flag lot, the frontage requirement is 20 feet. And then you also need to have a 10-foot setback for the existing single-family home. You can see, let me pull up like this, just on the side of the single-family home, it's about 20 feet already for that fire access that we talked about earlier. So it just, it wouldn't fit the current home. It wouldn't fit our requirements. It would bring it into more non-conformance, which we don't allow. So this was the only option. He wasn't, he is not able to subdivide it with our current code.
So the, the only way that he could really increase density is by doing something like this, and it would make it the same density as those three properties to the net, to the east of his?
It is, if, if he wanted to do just one unit in the backyard, he, he could technically do that with this rezon as well, you know?
But he couldn't do three?
He couldn't do three, no. There's just not, not enough.
So the very upper limit for this property would be three units, no matter what?
Unless he somehow expands with the property to the west or something like that, as it currently is, the only thing he could do with an LDR rezon is three units.
Now, the other question I had is if there were this rezon, it seems that the two townhomes wouldn't be able to, to really fit ADUs or anything like that with the parking, but would he be able to have an internal ADU in the original main house?
Yeah.
So then you could have four units on this property?
Technically, yes, but you would have to prove parking, which could be difficult. And what else? You'd have to prove owner occupancy, which it sounds like he's not quite thinking of doing that. So that's another thing. Obviously, townhomes aren't allowed to have ADUs at all. So it would just be this front home, and we'd have to probably do some finagling with that. And obviously, it couldn't be a detached, it couldn't be a, an addition or anything. It would have to be in the basement. Does it have a basement?
The original home?
Yeah.
It does.
Okay. So technically, it could. We'd have to look at the requirements, though.
Yeah. Because I know there's, there's concern about the usage of, of this property. I'm wondering if it would make sense to just build one unit in the back and have an ADU in the main house in the front that would still have three units for the property, but the back structure wouldn't necessarily have to be as small as the townhome. And then we would have at least owner occupation if you're going to have the two units for the front. Have, has anything like that been considered?
Has anybody told you, think about this? Is this a new idea?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, it's an option. Why not?
What are the constraints that you're looking at as you're trying to do this? Like, why are you wanting to build two units instead of one unit?
I just try to get a much as usage as, for the space that I have available there. Pretty, that's pretty much it.
That makes sense. Alright, thank you.
One thing I did want to say is if you, if we decided to do just one unit in the backyard, I think we would still need an LDR rezon for that to happen. As it is, we wouldn't be able to do that as the current zone, like we talked about with the flag lot. So just, just put that out there.
Thanks, Mary. I guess I do have one more question. She has another question. I'm sorry.
Since you can't subdivide the property because of the requirements with frontage and everything, would you be creating?
Didn't she say if you do one, you could?
No. If you, no. Yeah, flag lot requirements basically make it so that this property wouldn't be eligible for a flag lot.
But you have the alley access.
Yes, but that's not, with the, with a flag lot in the R16 zone, you have to have access, a fire access from the front. And this would require that to be from 400 South.
Thank you.
So it's gonna come back to me. I had it.
All good. And we will definitely, like I said, this is a concept plan and I'll even.
Okay, think, think about that, Rachel and Craig Christensen?
Yeah.
I'll actually wait for council discussion.
Okay.
Another question for them.
Oh, it's okay. I don't usually lose it so badly. It's because I flew back last night.
Any other questions for the owner or Mary? We, we may ask you to come up again. Thank you. Alright, we're gonna open this item up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item?
Hi, I'm Daniel Friend. I am here as the Vice Chair of Neighborhood District 5. We had this presented at our recent Neighborhood District meeting, and I wanted to let the city council know that everyone in District 5 is keenly aware of our housing shortage and how expensive housing is right now. And all of the comments that we had of this particular proposal were positive comments. People who said that they wanted it, the questions that we had were just to make sure that things like green space and access would be preserved. We want to contribute to solving the housing shortage here in Utah while still maintaining the aspects of our neighborhoods that we, that make us, that make them places that we love to live. So the comments in the Neighborhood District 5 meeting for this were all very positive.
Thanks, Daniel.
Maria Wynden, Mazer resident. I was unable to be at the neighborhood meeting, so my comments aren't reflective of what Daniel's reported. I am asking the council to deny this rezon. request, this rezon. I do understand the housing shortage. I'm, I'm asking to keep the zoning the same as it allows the homeowner to still build an ADU, which increases the unit by one instead of by two, still addressing the housing shortage. It maintains housing stability, increasing to LDR takes away the homeowner required occupied requirement without taking away the contributions of many of the, of Provo's many renters. There is an additional strength in stability when housing stock is thoughtfully balanced with homeownership. The Mazer neighborhood plan highlights increased homeowner, homeowner, increased owner occupied housing, and I believe this does the exact opposite. The staff analysis states other housing family units are close by. The only one that I would term close by, which was reflected in their photograph, is the one directly to the north. And that was a housing. And that was a housing, uh.
Habitat for Humanity.
Yes, and that requires them to be owner occupied. Um. Uh, in the last Board of Adjustment meeting, um, the staff report for an item under discussion in part stated history of variances, and I realize this is not variance, um, reflects an established precedent within the area indicating neighborhood uh acceptance. By passing this zone amendment, the city council opens itself up to further requests. Um.
There's a, there's a limit, thank you so much. Did you come to the planning commission and speak to?
Uh, no, I wasn't able to.
All right, this is the first time. That's good. We just, it helps us know the numbers of things. Thank you.
I was in Florida, unfortunately, with family.
No worries at all. Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, we're gonna move to council discussion. We'll start with you, Craig.
Thank you. Well, I just want to, uh, first of all, see, I think the um, obviously, the that lot has a uh space to build on and and is good infill. I feel very strongly about homeownership, and it's not either or, it's not rentals or homeownership, it's the balance. And I think the city council needs to be very careful about homeownership. And so I would be supportive of an ADU type of arrangement and building something in the back. I think that could be a very appropriate use. I think the neighborhood would agree with that as well. But um the homeownership in these neighborhoods is something I think we need to pay attention to. So as is, I I wouldn't vote for this. Um, but I would support uh something like an ADU.
Thanks, Craig. Did you remember what you were gonna say? Okay, Rachel Whipple.
So we can create a, like an HOA for this property? This is a question for the the owner or Mary, if you've got it. Because there would have to be common space and it would all be one parcel.
Yeah, so that's what we were planning. Um, I've talked to the applicant about doing something similar to the Habitat for Humanity property just to the north, having common space and having a HOA or of some sort to help take care of that.
Um, was, sir, you're the the owner, are you the person who's responsible for the gravel on the property? The the gravel that replaced the landscaping?
Yes.
What?
Partially done, but yes.
Okay, do you have plans to to rectify that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
We're planning on adding green, more green to that.
Okay. All right, um. Another question I have, I think, for Mary is instead of doing townhomes, would it make sense to build a second home that could have an ADU? So there could be two homes that are owner occupied, that would have the option to have an ADU in them?
That's a, that's a
Like, it would, like, physically with the space, could there be enough parking spots for that to work? But it would need to be subdivided to do that, right?
So if it stays, so a detached single family home is a is a um permitted use in the LDR zone, which is why we're asking for this one. So um technically, if we, I mean, I haven't seen any plans, so I probably can't speak to um parking spots or space for parking spots. But um technically, if it was rezoned to LDR, we could put another we could put another house in the backyard, another detached single family home. It it depends, obviously, it's private property, so it would be completely up to um Daniel and then also what would fit in our code. But it is possible, and then an ADU could be possible depending on the requirements as well. Um, with I I think there there might be some confusion with um R one six, the zone that it is right now, to add another home, you need an entirely separate lot. To change it to LDR, you can technically have two homes doing something like the Habitat for Humanity um property, if that makes sense. It kind of opens up a little bit more, uh, uh, some more options.
Okay. Yeah, because I really like the idea of having three housing units on the property. But I have want to have at least one of those units and preferably three occupied by people who own them. Um, I know that investing in real estate is a very smart financial decision for you and for your children. And I wish that I'd bought the house next to me that's a rental like years ago when it was on sale, because then my kid would have a place to live. Um, instead of the terrible little thing that she's living in right now. So I I understand your thinking like both as a parent and an investor. Um. But for for stability in the neighborhood, we want people living there who have have planted those roots. Okay, that's my thought on that one. Um, I listened to the planning commission on this one, and um I went and drove it today, and I drove down the alley. And I I just, I do think that three houses is too much density for this lot. I'm very concerned about. There was multiple residents, three residents spoke negatively about this at the planning commission as far as safety and the alley and um the two, two, it being too dense. So with the speaker here today, that is four residents who live right there. And um but so the alley, you can only do one car at a time. We could potentially be adding eight cars with these two houses. Um, that's a lot. And to have all the access only from the alley.
Only for that.
Yeah. It's concerning to me for those two houses. Um, I would love to see the house, which can have an ADU legally, do an external ADU in the back, so the house could be owner occupied, and then we could do an external ADU. I think that'd be great use of the space. Um, but that's my decision on this particular item. Any other comments? Um, Gary Garrett.
Given the council's uh priority and focus this year to um prefer owner occupancy, to encourage owner homeowner occupancy, I also favor the expressed preference to divide the property in a different way that would provide two units with an ADU in one of the units.
Any other comments? Counselor Handley.
Maybe I got a question for Brian. Um, because I want to be helpful to this um applicant, um, if the I I'm I'm wondering, I mean, I'm seeing his nodding at this idea, but I don't know if we're in any position over the dais to negotiate something like that or if we're just simply saying, um. I mean, I don't want to give false promises. I don't want to mislead, so I don't, but it seems to me that that to this council, it might be more palatable if there was something um like what's been mentioned uh with two units with an ADU in one. I don't know if that's even the will of this council to want to approve something like that, but that's um, I'm just, I just don't want to leave him completely hanging.
Right. Um, there's a couple, there's a couple of options that we have in the past at times um actually made motions from the dais and changed the zoning of that, of the proposed zone change to a completely different zone than the proposed zone. Um, we have done that on the basis that you have a planning commission rec- recommendation in front of you, and so the the general rule that we have followed in the past is if you want to change it to a zone that is more restrictive than the zone that the pl- the planning commission um reviewed, you can do that. If you want to change it to a zone that is less restrictive than the zone that the planning commission reviewed, you should send it back to the planning commission to get their recommendation on the less restrictive zone. So so that's one issue about the zoning. This, then the second thing is you could, of course, um, if if the zone that's being applied for works with some conditions, you ca- could suggest a development agreement. Uh, if a different zone works, but also with a development agreement, again, you could, you could suggest that. Kind of the question as far as timing goes is the more complicated it gets, the better it is to postpone it and and work out the details behind the scenes rather than try to work out the details from the dais, but there are options.
I mean, the the scenarios we're looking at would require the gentleman, the applicant, to move into the home. So that's a huge decision.
Well, not necessarily. It would, it could require someone else if it's a, if like if that second unit's an ADU, it requires owner occupancy. It doesn't have to be him.
True.
Yeah, so I mean, it it that there seem, it seems like we've we've contemplated a couple of ways to ensure uh homeownership, and one is that the developer agrees um that it will be for sale, right, like we had two weeks ago. Or if we have an ADU, we know it's required that they're owner occupied. So those are our only two options, but neither of those is being discussed at this point. So I don't know, that's that's what I'm just trying to make clear. It seems to me that from the council's point of view, those are attractive alternatives to what's being discussed here. Um, I mean, I'll say I like the infill project a lot. I like infill projects. I think we should encourage them. Um, I I think I share the concern that um, all three do not seem to be up for ownership but for rental, and that that concerns me. So if there was some way to, if there was some way um that this project assured us of some homeownership, it seems like it might be more acceptable.
All right, any more discussion on the motion? Counselor Whipple.
I will just say, as a a matter of like housing stock and what we want to see in the city, I think it would be nicer to have two new townhomes and that old house the full size of it intact, so that we've got a larger structure where the family could occupy the top and the bottom and everything. Instead of dividing that old house into, you know, the standard kind of old basement ADU and only having the maybe one new unit in the back. Um.
They could have one new unit with the ADU in the back and keep the house intact.
Oh, that would be.
I think that's the best solution.
I I do like that, but we would still need to do the zone change in order to build a second structure. So that's an interesting idea. Maybe what we, what we as a council would prefer would be to build one house in the back that is from the beginning designed to have an ADU in it. So that instead of two townhomes, both of which could be rented, we would just have
Right.
Something that would need to be sold, but we would still be able to get three properties or three, three housing units at that one property. Um, and then at least one person who's living on that parcel would be a homeowner. I think that sounds like a good compromise, and I don't know how different it would need to look actually from the townhome plan that he submitted. It would just have to be that there would be some proffer that one of, it would be a home for owner occupation. Is that right?
Um, I think our ADU policy requires that you can't have two front entrances. Um, I was just looking at that today. It seems like, and maybe Mr. Pepperoni, I don't know if he's here, or Mary, do you know? Uh, it seemed like if the language says something about it, it must be on the side or in the back, the second entrance.
Which they can do.
So they could do that even with uh something similar?
But I don't know if it's worth getting into the weeds of all this right now. I think
Just wanted to answer that question.
Yeah, yeah, take a vote on this motion, and I think the applicant's able to hear what our thoughts are for a future process.
So is, am I right in saying that the council does like the idea of being able to have at least two families live on this property and maybe three, but we want to have a homeowner portion for at least one of the residential units on the property. And so if we vote to reject the current thing that's in front of us right now, it's because we would like to see another proposal that would guarantee some level of homeowner occupation. And if the applicant doesn't intend to live there, um, it would mean that he needs to sell a portion so that both of those could be realized. Okay.
Counselor Bogdan.
So Brian, would it be better if we continued this so that they don't have to pay the money and reapply?
Well, we we've handled that a couple of different ways in the past, too. So you could, for instance, if you if you kind of want to put to bed the plan that's in front of you, and so that there's not a question of whether it's still on the table or not, you could make a motion to deny the current application, but to request the development services allow the applicant to submit um altered plans without paying the fee, and for those to come directly back to the council without going to planning commission if it's the same zone. Or you could continue it. E- e- either way, the 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 downside of continuing it is if he is actually not interested in that and and doesn't submit new plans, then you have to come back and vote on the current plan later. Um, but the upside of doing it that way is that if he is interested, then you haven't had a vote and you just, you just go through the steps. So we've, we've done it both ways. You could, I suppose, ask the applicant right now if they are interested in doing that and get a sense of whether they would prefer a denial that they can then go back and think about, or a continuance to talk more about development to development services about.
So applicant, what is your preference?
Can I ask you guys a question?
Yeah.
So the issue is, from from what I hear, the issue is that it's gonna be two units in the back, right? From what I gather.
Where you have access just with that one lane alley and the safety and the congestion and
Right.
For me, that's it.
So whether, and and like you said, it's a concept plan. Regardless, it's it's two units or one. My understanding is that the zoning is still needs to change.
Yes.
If, if.
Yeah.
Correct?
But we want to see a concept where there'd be owner occupancy.
You would need a proffer.
Okay, so, okay. I can't promise that I'm gonna move in.
Okay, yeah, I think we'll just vote on this, and then you can think about it, and you can come back with 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 um development services if you have another plan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I I thought I heard a question, though, that I'm not sure we answered. We're not, I mean, you you don't have to decide whether you want to be the owner occupant of on that property. It that the issue is whether or not what you're offering as a development plan requires owner occupancy in one of those units by somebody.
So you'd have to sell.
It doesn't have to be you. See what I'm saying?
But you're saying I will have to sell?
Yes.
Correct.
I, how could I sell one of them if it's just one lot, if it's not subdivided?
You can talk to, um, it's done through an HOA, and you could talk to development services about that.
If, if, yes, if that's an option, I would.
Okay. I think to keep this
I didn't know that was an option.
Yeah, that's great. Um, to keep this cleaner, Mary, you can follow up with him on a different scenario that he can do where he doesn't have to pay again, and we will take a vote on this for now, so that if he decides not to come back, we don't have to bring it back.
Okay, right, because it's possible that you may decide that it's too big of a headache. You want to dump the whole thing and and everything else. We've had applicants do that. But, um. Now, now you know how people up here feel, so that's useful information to you.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Chairman Kate, on, so based on what you just said, I I I would still, I think, make a motion rather than just voting on the implied motion. That way we have a record of the majority of the council saying that they're supportive of something coming back if it reflects owner occupancy and of the fees being waived. So I would just suggest i- if I'm hearing you right, I would suggest that someone make a motion to reject the current proposal based on the current, the the current rezone based on the current concept plan. But would invite development services to allow the applicant to submit a different con- concept plan and bring it back without fees.
I'd like to make a motion that we reject the current implied motion and allow the applicant to come back without paying more fees with a different concept plan that would include homeowner homeowner occupancy and less density.
I'd second that.
Okay, any comments on the implied motion?
Any reason is going to be more density. He's looking for an LDR. That's only one chunk up. So I can't agree with your motion when you have that and less density phrase in it.
Well, this is a, this could have four units in it.
I think she means less density than this proposal, right?
Yeah.
Would you, but are you considering um one unit with a separate detached unit with an ADU as less dense?
Yes.
Okay.
He can come with another concept plan.
That's the way I understood as well, is less density than the current concept plan, not less density than the current situation.
All right, so we have a, we have a motion on the table. Any other? All right. So we have a, we have a motion on the table. Any other comment? All right. We'll take a vote on the implied motion. Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple?
No.
Okay, so that passes six, one. All right. Next implied motion ordinance within the proposed city code regarding signs permitted in the freeway, commercial and regional shopping center zones. Citywide application presented by Aaron Ardmore.
Thank you, council. Uh, so just a quick background on this. Uh, the property there on, on the screen uh in red is our only instance of the FC three zone. Uh, the FC three zone was created a while back to try to attract a regional user to the site adjacent to the freeway. Um, and we're getting closer on that. Uh, so one of the comments on, from that group is that the signage being in the general commercial standards didn't really fit the zone. Um, as staff, we agreed with that. And we, we helped the applicant come up with a proposal to uh shift the sign regulations from the general commercial zones to a regional shopping center zone. Um, and in that there's requirements, rules about adjacency to I fifteen, uh, how much adjacency is needed and so forth. Um, currently in the city, this would be the only instance uh that would qualify for a sign uh that's of this type and size. Uh, that's on this, in the language in your packets. Um, the planning commission recommended approval of this. They saw it as more of a cleanup item. Uh, assigning the right sign regulations to, to the zone, the existing zone. Um, in working meeting today, we talked about distance. Um, the, the current proposal that we showed was about seven hundred feet away from the nearest R one zone. Um, but there's currently nothing in the code that would regulate or specify that. Um, so that might be a point of discussion, but other than that, that's, that's all I really have for this unless there's any questions for me.
Thanks, Aaron. Do we have the applicant here?
I hope so. Yes.
Great. Do we have any questions for Aaron or the applicant? Counselor Bogdan?
For the applicant?
Yes, Spencer Hymus, one seventy-two Northeast Promontory, Farmington, Utah. Uh, here on behalf of Galloway, the civil design team for this proposed development.
Thank you, Spencer. I do have concern about how far away this sign would be in the language in our text. Um, I would love it if you would be open to say five hundred feet from any residential space. If that could be added to our text so that it's not right up on residential space. So we have some buffer, some guarantee that that sign's not going to be too close to a neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, we would be definitely amenable to that. Uh, as we proposed it right now, we did try to push it back as far as we could. Uh, and so as we have it at the seven hundred feet is, that's, that's what we were planning for.
I, I would be a hundred percent open to this as long as there's that provision of seven hundred feet from any residential or five hundred feet, some, some something that's not like a hundred feet, but five hundred to seven hundred feet. If that could be added, I'd be a hundred percent on board.
Yeah, we would be uh amenable to that for sure.
Okay, can we make that change in our implied motion tonight, Brian?
We can certainly do that by motion and I already sent um Michael uh text to that effect. Michael, if you want to put it up, just so everybody can see what it would look like. So it uh, keep scrolling down. I don't know the line number for sure, but so right there, I added the sub five at line one oh nine. This, this, this is a list of criteria that the sign has to meet. And so one of the criteria would be is located at least five hundred feet from any residential property. So, so we could add that by motion.
Excellent. Any more questions for the applicant or for Aaron? Right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll open this item up for public comment. Any public comment on this item? Was Brian coming? Um, all right, council discussion. Any discussion on this item? Counselor Hoben?
I appreciate the wanting to keep it away from residential. I'm curious. Obviously, if residential were built in the future, they wouldn't be held to this and need to move their sign, right? This would just be five hundred feet from existing residential, right? I would assume that was the intent.
Yes, wouldn't this be from any existing residential property?
Um, I mean, because
we can add that, that's fine. I mean, it'll, it'll work the same way.
Just making it clean, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, it'll work the same way because once the sign's built, then it'll be non-conforming even if it's, but is existing, what does it mean ten years from now? Existing at the time of?
Well, whatever. If you're not worried about, I'm not worried about. I just wanted to make sure it's clean so that, you know, somebody doesn't build a house and say, oh, according to your code, you have to move that sign five hundred feet away.
No, it, that wouldn't happen because it'd be a non-conforming use.
Yes.
If I may, I know that we would definitely try to stay away from any sort of non-conforming, non-compliance issues with the zoning code. Would it be uh maybe a possibility for it to be adjacent to like the R one eight zoning? Uh, as, as that is what is existing, as opposed to what, you know, may be proposed in the future?
I mean, we're thinking of the housing on this land, right?
I mean, because this whole section already applies to, only applies to SC three and FC three. Um, so I'm trying to figure out how that helps you because you're worried about if future residential gets added in a different zone?
Correct.
Is that even, is that, I defer to Aaron. Is that possible within five hundred feet of where the sign's gonna go?
Yeah, I, I think um you could see like LDR zone coming around adjacent to the site. So I think it would be clean enough to say it is located at least five hundred feet from any R one zone. Something like that.
That's fine with me if that's fine with those who are making the motion.
Is that fine with the applicant?
Yes, that would be fine.
All right, great. Any more comment on this item? Counselor Whipple?
Yeah, and I just wanted to be sure that I understand that the sign can only be on that side by I fifteen. It cannot, there can't be a big sign along Lakeview Parkway and any of the other pads, which would end up being closer because this particular zone only allows for it adjacent to I fifteen.
Correct. Yeah, you have to have the adjacency to I fifteen and this is the, the one lot and spot in the city that would permit this.
So, so this change really constrains the, the location of the sign to like a little tiny fifty foot radius.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, any more discussion? All right, let's take a vote.
So we first need a, a motion to amend this language.
All right. We are going to make a new motion to add language, the implied motion. Right?
I believe so.
That it'll be located at at least five hundred feet from any property in an R one zone. All right.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Gary Garrett. Um, Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
And Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
And that passes seven oh. Next implied motion.
Sorry, Jerry McKay. Uh, so that, that motion adds the language. Now you need to vote on the implied motion to actually approve the ordinance with the added language.
Okay. We will again vote on the implied motion with the added language. Counselor Garrett?
And if that motion needs a second, I'll, I'll offer the second as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
And that passes seven oh. Next implied motion ordinance many proposed city code regarding a special use, special use permits for accessory dwelling units, presented by Malia Daly.
Good evening, council. Okay, I don't have a lot to present here since this item was continued from our previous meeting. Um, I'm just gonna put the text up here on the screen. Well, I'm not going to Michael's. The actual text that we're amending, not the ordinance itself. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so um just for context and kind of introduction, again, this is amending fourteen thirty forty, which is just the special use permit, um, what we sometimes refer to as the pathways. This is getting rid of the individual property administrative approval pathway that um allows for individual property owners to apply for a special use permit for an ADU that runs just with that property owner. It is not a zone change and it does not run with the land as soon as that property owner sells or leaves and is no longer the primary occupant of that um home, their special use permit is revoked. Um, that is what is up for proposal of repeal today. This does leave in the multiple properties pathway, which still requires signatures, the signatures of neighbors. So and does the council have any questions?
Um, any questions for Malia? Or planning staff? Thanks, Malia. Okay, we will open this item up for public comment. And we just need every public comment to give their name and where they live, please.
Uh, my name is Cam Valgardson. So I'm actually a resident of Salem, but I'm a native of Provo, born here, went to school here. Met my wife here, so that's nice. Um, but I'm actually uh the general manager of Iron Town Modular. We're a factory located in Spanish Fork. And we build, uh, factory-built homes. And primarily, we're shipping those out of state. They're going to California, Montana, Colorado. Recently, with um the housing crisis getting higher and hotter here in Utah, we've directed a lot of our efforts to try and produce ADUs primarily in the, in the Wasatch Front area. Those are areas where we can actually be general contractor and factory and produce high quality units to go into Provo, for example. Um, we've, we've actually got one client here and I just want to share my experience, not take too much time. Um, but uh we're, we're just getting started. We, we've got a client up in the Edgemont area and as we go through and begin helping him, trying to figure out if he can or can't build this ADU in his property, we're peeling back layer after layer and trying to determine the feasibility. We're finding it's not simple. It's not easy. There's a lot of barriers in the way. I just want to share a couple with you. Um, some of them have to do with the way the product was platted. The project was platted with common space in their yards and the private is only the house. For some reason that was done, that's a barrier we've got to overcome. Um, but uh there's been some other things that are challenging. Uh, and I don't know all the ins and outs. We're still trying to figure that out, but um, one of them is that it requires a uh direct tie to the mains for sewer and water. Very high cost differential between tying into the front yard of the property. Um, probably twenty to thirty thousand dollar difference to go through sidewalk, curb, gutter, street with really not a good reason. Another one is setbacks or ten feet uh on a quarter acre lot that puts the ADU right in the middle of the backyard. So I, I just, I know, I see the clocks running, so I guess my time's almost up here, but.
Yep. Thank you. You're done. Feel free to send us an email. Any more public comment? You could pull that up.
Resident of Provo. And uh there are people here tonight on both sides of this issue. But there are many, many people uh who are Provo citizens who are not here for various understandable reasons. However, those residents are represented in a survey that I assume the full city council has fully reviewed, done by Y two analytics, a respected Utah polling firm. The survey by Y two analytics found that Provo residents were, and I quote, most interested in single-family homes with large yards, close quote. That was the modal response from the Provo residents, thirty-nine percent. Nearly double the twenty-two percent who said that ADUs were the most needed housing in Provo. ADUs in fact ranked fifth in terms of identified housing needs, housing options seen citywide as most needed. ADUs were behind single-family housing with large yards, student housing, townhomes with individual yards, apartments and mixed-use development, all ahead of ADU. Tied for sixth with ADUs to Provo residents were single, were, were single-family garden uh courtyards. The Y two study broke down the preferred housing policies by city council district. I encourage you to review that data. It indicates that there is a substantial point of view that varies by areas, but no area values ADUs in the highest level. Zoning laws are designed to protect property rights. Limits on commercial development, as you've been hearing tonight, having farm animals on city lots and so forth. I urge you to respect the long-standing zoning expectations of neighbor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mallaby, could you remind us of the year of that, the Y two analytics study?
I think it was twenty twenty-two.
Just to know how current.
Yeah, it's very current and had to be expensive. I mean, this is a voluminous report, as I can attest to tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is, my name is Carlos Sosori. I live in the Grand View neighborhood. Uh, to me, the removing this option doesn't make sense because you have to go around, right, and get the, gather the signatures of all your neighbors and only with a unanimous approval can you sell the ADU.
Sixty-six percent.
Oh, sixty, okay. Even then, I mean, it doesn't make sense for somebody who's bought the property. There's, I'm in favor of restrictions, obviously. I'm not talking about some kind of libertine allowance to do whatever with your property. But I just, I don't see why we need to be restricted and what, you know, there I'm lucky enough to live in a home that we own, right? But what if, you know, my parents don't have much of a retirement, right? If they wanted to move in, but maybe they still want their independence, I should be allowed to build them something. Again, as long as my neighborhood generally approves, right? This is taking away individual freedoms to manage our own properties within reason and restricting it quite a bit. My political leanings are more classical libertarian. I'm very much for allowing people to, you know, do as they like within reason. And I just don't see what the reason besides this is, besides maybe somebody being upset that somebody gathered enough signatures to build an ADU in a neighborhood they didn't want them in, right? And so I don't under Yes, if most of Provo, uh, like the commenter before me just said, doesn't want this, that's okay. But if somebody within a neighborhood does their due diligence and shows that their immediate area is fine with it, and more so especially if that's only for that individual homeowner, right, after they sell the land or pass away, that allowance goes away, why are we taking away that ability for us to make it easier on the city councilor and make it easier ultimately on people who might need housing? You know, most of the time that will be family, not renters. Thank you.
Good job on time management. Thank you.
My name is Dawson Wheeler. I live in uh the Rock Canyon area. Um, I'm a first-time homeowner here in Provo, so here in Provo is the first home I've ever bought. And um the reason my wife and I decided to buy a home here in Provo is because we wanted more of a quality living standards because my experience in Provo is that a lot of apartments that you can rent out, a lot of homes, a lot of townhouses are not up to date and modern and have the nicest um standard of living. And so we took matters into our own hands and we actually remodeled completely this really old home. And now we're realizing that with this housing crisis, it's getting a little expensive. The mortgage is too expensive for us to handle on our own. And so we're wanting to live in the basement. We have a basement apartment, completely separate doors and everything. Um, but we can't get it approved for an ADU because right now the process is um on hold, but even if this repeal went through, um, we wouldn't be able to get that approved very easily. And we want our cousins and our sisters are wanting to move here to Provo. We want them to live in our home that we remodeled. It's, I believe, the nicest thing that we've been able to provide for them. And we're not able to do that because of the ADU process. And so it just is very difficult because we want to be able to provide the best for our family and for our cousins and we have two different sides of the family, so it gets complicated. Everyone all living in one property. It doesn't, it doesn't really work. And so we need that ADU to be able to have a good living for us, for my wife and I, but also the family and friends that we were wanting to rent it out to and provide it for. And so I just feel like there is And so I just feel like there is a lot of people that do agree that there is a need for more housing in Provo. There, it's booming. We got a lot of younger generation and older generation colliding and so we need homes for everyone to live in.
Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Casey D'Cio. I'm in, uh, Provo resident. Um, I do not bear any numbers tonight. I just want to add some perspective. People are dealing with housing crises, financial crises, life crises, divorce, loss of a spouse, loss of a job, loss of a home, or trying to save for a more secure future. Many homeowners have been blessed with resources to give somebody a boost, a second chance by offering them affordable housing. The quality of life in these owner-occupied homes is a significant improvement over the alternative. It is often more affordable, closer to school or work, and in an established neighborhood with caring neighbors. I have been inspired by such neighbors in my community who took in others, including a single mother recently divorced, supporting herself through school while raising a new toddler, a couple of small children making meager income, saved for their future, and a family coming to Provo from a developing nation in search of a better life. Helping these individuals is hard and yet helping them in legal fashion is even harder. Within the last year, I was acquainted with two individuals, each a single mother with dependents whose rental had been sold out from under them. They needed housing. I did my best to legally allow them to live with me, close to their work and school. Ultimately, I was unable to obtain the required consent to allow either of these individuals to stay in my home legally. One of them now commutes to Provo from Davis County and the other moved to Orem while still attending Timpview and BYU. The current procedures, I admit, are imperfect and while more solutions are surely being considered, I implore you to not shut this one down until something better is in place. I believe that doing so would be a step in the wrong direction. There are certainly avenues for abuse with ADUs. Those avenues will be exploited despite the most earnest efforts of the council. Let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Let's believe in our neighbors, assume the best, and be the best Provo we can be. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey.
I'm Barbie DiSoto. I think you know me, um, I live in Grandview. Um, I agree with his comment about, um, having something in place. I think that's really important. Um, I, I really think that it's weirdly interventionist to require a zone amendment or like to go through council for every single ADU. I think there should be a more widespread way to a yes that makes sense. And in the meantime, I think that's what should be worked on until this is repealed because I think it's leaving a big gap in the toolbox, as a lot of you talked about. I watched the last meeting. Um, I appreciate your discussion. Um, yeah, and I just feel like people want to adapt, people want to help, people like the last commenter, people want to be self-sufficient, they want to find, find ways to help each other in the community. And I think it's unnecessarily, these kinds of, uh, being too interventionist can be really standing in the way of people's urge to be self-reliant, to help their neighbors and things like that. And we really shouldn't be doing that. Um, as I mentioned in my email, there are a lot of kids I know who, who live, um, in our ward, which is Big Ward, it's a Spanish ward, and we're glad they're here. Um, I would love to see more. I would love to see more in my neighborhood and I, I just want everybody to find a yes in a place that they're welcome and they're loved and they're home. And I don't have any problem with even the most, uh, crazy allowances for ADUs. So I just would like you to please consider finding a way, um, a way forward for people before repealing this. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbie.
I'm Dennis Halli. Um, years ago, I used to live on Maple Lane in the Tree Streets and we had next to us Briar Avenue, which was a increasingly rental occupied place, particularly by, um, renters who are students and the owners were actually lived in California or somewhere. And my wife and I were concerned because we saw the, the neighborhood that we lived in gradually deteriorate. There was almost no parking on the streets. Provo had a rule that you couldn't park on the streets at certain different times. Well, it turns out that that was a rule, but it wasn't necessarily enforced. It was frustrating to us. And though we lived on a street that didn't allow the rentals, pretty soon there was, uh, the, the people who owned the property started a rent-to miscellaneous people and my wife was frustrated with this. And, uh, when we went to church one day, while we met a guy that was coming in from California and he was here to buy pieces of property to rent out. He wasn't ever intending on living here. And at that point, my wife and I put our house up for sale and we moved to Mapleton. Now, the neighborhood we have in Mapleton is really enjoyable, but my family is getting smaller and smaller, so my wife and I thinking, maybe we should rethink the size of the house and downsize. Well, one of the downsize options that I had pursued was moving back to the Pleasant View area. Your decision here will help me decide whether I want to come back to Provo or stay in places that have a defined neighborhood for people who live there and own that, own there and not for morass of people, and I hate to say crudely, but for people who are, don't have the same ownership in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Connect. Um, as I read some of the current language, it talks about, uh, getting a special use permit and that it would then amend the chapter in order to designate accessory dwelling units as a permitted use for all the applying properties. So if we go down that road, to me, that gives rights to the property. Whereas if you read in the elderly person's extra living space language, it says, "A registration shall be accepted and is personal to the registrant to whom it is issued shall not run with the land and may be revoked upon noncompliance with the terms of this section" or "upon expiration or revocation of a registration, the occupancy of the extra living space of such registration shall be terminated and the one-family dwelling shall be occupied only as authorized in the zone wherein the dwelling is located." So this type of language in the elderly extra living space section gives me assurance that the property is not being granted the rights, but only the person. And that has been a point of contention or confusion. And without that language in there, as I read it, it still seems like we're giving rights to the property that have no way of being revoked or reviewed or going away. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. June, I'm going to call, um, an online person, Matthew Cluit. Your hand is raised.
Good evening, council. My name is Matthew Cluit and I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Utah Central Association of Realtors. As was our position at the last council meeting, our association believes that this proposed ordinance to remove the special use permit with administrative approval for ADUs is bad public policy and will turn a transparent and straightforward process opaque and difficult and shutter a key tool for homeownership. This proposed change only hurts those seeking to obey the law rather than the rule breakers that everyone agrees should be held accountable. In fact, Provo making this process for obtaining an ADU more difficult when clearly there is a significant market demand and housing need will only drive those who would otherwise pursue legal means to, to abandon their homeownership ambitions while others exasperate the proliferation of illegal ADUs. Multiple times I've heard from members of this council that enforcement is a significant concern. Our report attached from Provo's Code Enforcement Division outlines clearly that there is no significant barrier in overseeing and enforcing this program. Additionally, there have been no complaints filed against approved ADUs through this program. By choosing to continue and expand programs like these, more units will come into compliance, lessening the enforcement burden. Spot zoning has also been an issue that's been brought up. Our solution would be to allow them citywide instead. However, I doubt such a change will be implemented at any time soon. So instead, I encourage you to keep this program that is clearly working at a modest rate in place, set sunset requirements, improve upon it, and find ways to increase enforcement while simultaneously allowing ADUs to be gradually phased in. ADUs provide a pathway to homeownership, a pathway that encourages investment in the community and neighborhoods. If the goal of this council is to increase owner-occupied housing in place of corporate-owned houses for rent, ADU should be a top priority. I ask this body on behalf of our association to maintain the current fair and transparent administrative approval process and improve upon it in lieu of eliminating it. Thank you.
Thanks, Matthew. All right.
My name is Jessica Priest. I live on Lower Ash in the Tree Streets for the last twelve years. I love my neighborhood because it is such a vibrant, supportive, and friendly community. I'm here to speak against the proposed elimination of the special use permit for ADUs. It's common for people who are upset to express their opinions to the city council. It's less common for people like me who are happy with ADUs in their neighborhood to take the time to come to these meetings. But there are actually a lot of us, they're all at family activities right now because, you know, it's a Tuesday night. The owner-occupied ADUs in my neighborhood are mostly invisible to the regular observer, but the more you know about each home, you realize that rather than hurting the neighborhood, these owner-occupied ADUs have done a lot to stabilize the neighborhood. Um, they make it a place that people can live throughout their entire lives. As you know, many ADUs facilitate caregiving for the elderly, but that isn't the only life circumstance that can force a beloved neighbor out of their home. Just in the two blocks I'm most familiar with, I can think of two cases of families who weathered job loss without having to sell their home because of their ADUs. These are families with teenagers and kids. I can think of several families who were able to stay put after divorces because of their home's ADU income. I can think of at least five cases of people who grew up in the neighborhood who were able to return as adults because of the flexibility that ADUs provide. These have been very, very good things for my neighborhood and the reasons, the problems that were happening in the early 2000s are a different, it's a different discussion. Um, while ADUs can be abused, the special use permit process has probably the best safeguards to protect against these situations, especially because neighbors know so much about each particular situation. This seems like an excellent pathway to promote the right kinds of ADUs in Provo that people want. Um, please reconsider repealing this sensible pathway.
My name is Jana Garrett. I'm a Provo resident. Neighborhoods are an important part of any city's landscape. The city's current policy allowing for special use permits for accessory dwelling units is detrimental to neighborhoods in several ways, although I wish to mention only two of these this evening. First, to obtain one of these permits, a homeowner must, must approach neighbors to obtain permission from a certain percentage of them stating that they are willing to allow for the ADU. This isn't, this is awkward for all parties involved. Neighbors who are opposed to adding an ADU in their neighborhood are put in the awkward position of either being the bad guy and having to tell their neighbor no, or having to agree to an ADU when they truly would rather say no. The opposite can also hold, hold true when someone would feel okay about signing but feels pressure from other neighbors to abstain. I have seen this very thing among my neighbors. This exact issue caused disunity, friction, and bad feelings. This process pits neighbor against neighbor, making the current special use permit process bad policy and a poor piece of legislation. Second, if any, if any home anywhere in the city can be purchased and used as a duplex, the cost of housing will increase, thus reducing the opportunity for affordable housing for families wishing to live in single-family homes. A balance of different types of neighborhoods and housing opportunities is important to promoting thriving communities and a vibrant city. ADUs are one important element of this. Single-family neighborhoods are also an important option. If single-family neighborhoods are to survive, they need to be protected by city code. To help promote an orderly and non-contemptious approach to city zoning, as well as help preserve a balance of housing options within Provo City, I respectfully ask the city council to repeal the current special use permit for Provo, Provo City and restore neighborhood zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys are doing so good on time.
Good evening, council. My name is David Wright. I reside in Provo. I have a few thoughts I'd like to share about ADUs. I think we need a balance. Uh, ADUs are useful. Neighborhoods that want ADUs should be allowed to have ADUs. But spot zoning is not a good solution. A home is usually the biggest financial investment a family, uh, can make and they need to know ahead of time what the neighborhood is going to be like. If there's going to be ADUs, then they can embrace it. If there's not, then they should be respected. I looked up spot zoning and found this on, in Wikipedia. Spot zoning is the application of zoning to a specific parcel or parcels of land within a larger zoned area when the rezoning is usually at odds with the city's master plan and current zoning restrictions. Spot zoning may be ruled invalid as an arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable treatment of a limited parcel of land by local zoning ordinance. While zoning regulates the land use in whole districts, spot zoning makes unjustified exceptions for parcels or parcels within a district. Provo already has the highest density of, uh, low-income housing in the state with, uh, BYU, UVU students, and now another medical university in Provo. We have plenty of people, uh, who are taken care of and there's more high-density housing proposed. We need to preserve family neighborhoods. People who, in my neighborhood, when they bought their homes or built their homes, they knew what the zoning was and they had expected that it would be enforced. Thank you very much.
Thanks, David.
Greg Hadley, member of, uh, our good community. And I got to tell you, I'm going to take ten, start your timer.
Hey, we can't quite hear you. Pull up your mic.
Can you hear me? Hello, hello?
Yep, there you go.
Yes. The building, the transparency. I love the windows on Main Street. Anybody can just watch us hammer it out. I love it. And I love the first part of your, uh, AUD ordinance. It's make your application. If you, if you, you have a big enough lot, you got enough parking, that's fine. Four needs to go. Four needs to go because of a couple of questions. Does a city have a right or a duty to ensure that its citizens have housing? Does a city have a duty to ensure that, uh, financial security of homeowners? No. That's in part of your preamble to that. And section four cuts against that. Since nineteen twenty-six, we've had zoning legal in the United States, according to the United States Supreme Court. But when we take a zoning law that people have relied on and have established communities based on that, and then the word spot zone has been used, we overlay that with something kind of done, well, hey, talk to my neighbors, you know, the ones to the south, the northeast, the one, no. That cuts against the very idea of promoting family life, which is part of the preamble. You want to promote family life. Those that have put in the investment to live in a community based on a zone should not be subject to something done under the table, which I believe four does. And I think if that's what we're talking about, repealing four, section four, it needs to be repealed. Leave it to the conscience, just the neighbors. Pass good laws, but let the neighbors look at the situation and not be forced because of certain other, uh, attitudes.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Callie Prater and I live in the Rock Canyon neighborhood. I am a first-time homeowner in general, but here in Provo especially, but my parents and grandparents grew up in Provo and I grew up with a strong glove of Provo and desire to come to BYU. It has been a little bit frustrating, um, owning a home and putting a lot of work into it to try to improve it and, um, make sure that it's a good place for me and my family to live for many years to come in the future and to then learn that there may be a possibility to not allow an ADU approval in the way that is currently offered. We have a separate basement apartment in our home that we are hoping to get approved and we love our neighborhood and we love our neighbors and we, um, don't feel that it's fair to take away a process and make it more complicated and, um, continue to add those restrictions when we've already built and planned for the things that are currently in place. Um, that's actually all I have to say. I only took up a minute, but thank you.
Good job, good job. And I wanted to let you know too, that you can always have family live with you. That's always been legal and is legal.
We just have, um, more, so the, the upstairs unit has three bedrooms. We just have more, so the upstairs unit has three bedrooms and the downstairs unit has one. In order to have those three singles, it seems like we would have to get the ADU approved.
Yeah.
So that's our current issue. Thank you.
When did you buy your home?
In June.
In June, just now? Congratulations. That's so exciting.
We also just got married in September, so.
Congratulations again. That's amazing. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laura Middleton. I live in the Rock Canyon neighborhood and I serve on the neighborhood district executive board for District One. Provo City has zoning laws designed to tailor land use to the particular situation of each neighborhood. These diverse land use policies allow residents the opportunity to choose a location within the city that best matches their needs, while ensuring that a variety of options exist within the city. My husband and I deliberately chose to purchase a house in Provo in an area zoned for single family homes, with the expectation that the zoning laws would protect our investment and that our neighbors wouldn't be able to begin raising hogs in their backyard or build a soda shop in their front yard or begin renting their basement to a bunch of college students. The policy allowing the development of ADUs in single family neighborhoods by procuring the approval of immediate neighbors is an incredibly flawed and short sighted idea. First, the impact of ADUs in the neighborhood goes far beyond those who live adjacent to the home with the ADU. Yet, the other neighbors a little further up or down the street have absolutely no say in the matter. Second, there is no provision for the ADU permit to be rescinded if the voting neighbors change their mind when the outcome is undesirable or if new neighbors opposed to the ADU move in. And third, the current policy can create discord in neighborhoods where a few residents can overturn decades of precedent and reliance on city zoning laws and where those opposed to the ADUs are characterized as selfish for wanting the type of neighborhood they.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eric Chase. I live in Provo. I live in a neighborhood where ADUs have been allowed for generations for, I don't know, 50 plus years at least. And I want to give you some, some of my experiences and what living like that means. Living in a neighborhood like, like, living in a neighborhood like that means. Being in a city, cities are dynamic. Cities are changing all the time. The needs of the citizens change, the broader economics of the country and the state and the city and the population, all those things change. And we can't expect everyone to live like it's 1970 or whatever, when BYU had tens of thousands of fewer students and this was a small town still. Being in a city means adapting to new circumstances. I want to talk about a few times people have mentioned how much having ADUs impacts parking in an area and my experiences with that. People do park on the street, but people fill up the street parking spaces before they fill up their individually owned parking spaces. So everyone, even if the street is full, there's driveway and garage spaces in every unit. And the requirements we have that require more and more off-street parking to try and mitigate that don't work because that's not how neighborhoods work. They, they use the public street parking first before the off-street parking. And limiting housing options in an area by the justification of parking problems, it just doesn't work. It just results in different types of people using the street other than the residences. My street has people who will park and ride, park their work trucks there over the weekend and everybody meets up and leaves their trailers there. There's businesses operating rental van companies out of the neighborhood because we have so much excess parking here. So limiting housing options and property rights for.
Thanks, Eric.
Hi, I'm Adam Dines. I live in the tree streets, have been there in the lower tree streets for the past almost nine years now. And I speak in favor of keeping the current process and the important role that ADUs play in our neighborhood. There are lots of ADUs all around me. And I want to point out that lots of people who rent also are families. I had four children as a renter before I owned a home and had our fifth child. And they're an important part of our community. And even in our ward, Church Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints, we have five blocks and 60 youth. It's full of families and full of ADUs. Those things are, can go together. But I'm also a political scientist at BYU and I study local politics. And a major, you know, a national crisis, which was part of the presidential election, is housing costs. And what most of the research suggests, who has the most control over housing costs? It's you. It's city councils. And what is it that is restricting? You know, what is leading to high housing costs, one of the biggest factors is lack of supply of housing. And what is leading to a lack of supply of housing? A lot of it is how we do our zoning. And ADUs are, I think, a very straightforward and simple way to try to increase housing, but in a way that doesn't make dramatic changes to neighborhoods, right? It's not tearing down a home and putting in a large apartment next door, it's just adding an additional unit. And this is something that many scholars who are thinking about how can we address this crisis that they advocate for. And again, yeah, I think my neighborhood has been wonderful with the ADUs. Allows us to have young families in the neighborhood, young couples, just a variety of people. Yeah, so just want to support them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Doug Gale and I appreciate the council and the work you do. I've sent an email, which all of you received, and my wife has talked with Commissioner McKay and Commissioner Hannity has responded back, Commissioner Garrett, so I appreciate that. And I've talked to Commissioner Holman about that. I'm here to ask that the ADU provision be repealed and we go back to not having that in our neighborhood. I live in Granby area and people move there to have single family homes. We need to preserve single family dwellings in our community so that they're not run over with excess parking or individuals that becomes more like a student complex. I think sometimes the tree streets are overrun with parking, excess parking. I'm concerned that it, the enforcement is a problem. Commissioner Hannity has responded back to me that you, you provide additional resources for that. And I still believe that experience I had to have an enforcement done, it was very difficult to work with the department. They were understaffed, they were understaffed and overworked. People are intimidated by these papers being passed out. I talked to Commissioner Holman, rather heated conversation, I thought. And I disagree. He's visited with some of the other neighbors. They haven't appreciated the light of his comment. He even visited one neighbor and took a batch of cookies to them to get them to vote for this person. The application needs to be thoroughly reviewed. The application that I saw had a cover letter, which was about half true. And so I hope that these things can be thoroughly reviewed. Neighbors are afraid to come and comment. They're afraid that they won't like them. I'll still talk to Commissioner Holman. We're friends, even.
Thank you.
My name is Maureen LeBray and, excuse me, and I live in Provo. I'm going to speak from a voice experience. I just came off the golf course and I thought it was important to be here. My dad, when I was in high school, my dad, I had two older brothers that were attending BYU. My dad bought a home about Fourth East, between Fourth and Fifth East, Fourth and Fifth North. He changed, he then rented it to five single men who were going to BYU. And then the neighbors did not like it because they had cars. So the neighbor to the left sold and the neighbor to the right sold. And then the neighbor, and then the neighbors sold him the back half of their lots and he built a fourplex in there. Then the neighbor on the other end sold and moved out of this area, which was originally single family home dwellings, single, anyway. So then he ended up with three homes and a fourplex and rented it. It ruined the neighborhood. And I, it just kind of grew and these people moved from Provo proper into, up into the Edgemont area. I have seen what happens when people come in and don't, and they start renting out. It increases cars. It increases traffic and it, it changes the dynamics of the neighborhood. And I don't want to see this happen to our neighborhood. We had an ADU across the street. They parked in our, partially in our driveway. They were visiting and we backed out, not. Anyway, we hit into their car, so we had to go pay for that. I urge you to don't destroy Provo's single family neighborhoods. Zoning was put in there for a purpose. Keep it and keep the zoning. It makes organization, it makes, it makes, it makes it livable. And I just urge you to please not destroy the neighborhoods that we live in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen, for your comments. We live in a neighborhood.
You need to say your name.
Oh, my name is Carolyn Wright.
And she lives in Provo.
And I live in Provo. In our neighborhood, often we find parking problems. Like, okay, so how do we get out of our driveway, down through this and into? And the problem is that there are many more cars belonging to each property perhaps than there were when that property was built. And one of the concerns is that if there are, I mean, if people have, you know, cars in their, on their driveway, cars in their parking, and then parking on the street as well. There have been situations, especially when it's snowy and things are blowing up like this, you've got a car parked on each side of the street and then you've got two cars trying to pass each other. It was, it gets sort of jammed. And this, I think, is a jamming that we have not, I mean, LeBray came close to it, but it's not something that we think about and concerned about when, perhaps when we're adding, you know, new or putting apartments into our home. Is so, okay, so now are you going to park people on your grass, on your front yard? Or where, where are all these people going to park? Not just, you know, how many beds can they get in? But where, where are they going to park and still be able to go up and down their street? You know, we live on a, a sort of a half. So there's an upper and a lower road that go around, you know, like this. And sometimes it gets really tricky.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is, I'm Carly Dines. I live in the tree streets as well. And I'm against the proposed change. I live in a home with an approved ADA. We don't rent it. And our neighborhood is full of ADUs in the tree streets. And it's been so healthy for our neighborhood. Living near BYU, these are mostly occupied by married couples and often married couples with kids. And these young families have an opportunity to be part of our established community, but they also give so much to us. My husband mentioned we have 60 youth in our neighborhood. And it's these young families who serve in our youth communities. They're the ones who babysit my kids when we need to go out of town. They're shoveling sidewalks. They, they give so much to our community. And for many years, my family rented an apartment. We couldn't afford to buy a home until we were 35 years old. And we were renters for all those years. And so I just want to point out, families live in rentals, families live in ADUs. And I know it was mentioned that Provo residents prefer single family homes with large yards. And like, I also want a swimming pool and a castle, but the financial reality is that it's not affordable for young families. And I think it's worth mentioning the generational divide in the comments. The younger folks here are saying, keep this pathway because it's not affordable for younger residents to purchase homes in the ways that our older, our parents and our grandparents were able to. When we purchased our home four years ago, knowing that we had a rentable basement apartment made us feel so much more comfortable with what felt like an astronomical price tag that's only gotten higher since those five years. And it made it so we felt confident and allowing other families this kind of freedom in case of job loss or divorce or death or other. I'm, I'm a graduate student now, so our income is down, so that's another thing. I want to also mention some of the comments about the neighborhoods being ruined. These are non complying units. These are parents who are buying homes for their kids. And so these aren't owner occupied homes. And I know because this is my neighborhood and I live among them. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment? It's now or never. All right. We are going to move to council discussion. Councilor Gary Garrett.
Thank you. And I certainly thank all who have spoken and participated in person and virtually. It's helpful to get so much feedback and input from others. I, I wanted to just read my comments so as to not be misunderstood or, or misquoted, if you'll bear with me. I recognize accessory dwelling units or ADUs are part of the solution to creating a community that balances housing types and that also provides for growth through affordable housing options. ADUs have been shown as a way to increase housing supply without straining infrastructure. Local and state governments recognize these and other benefits and have promoted ADUs in their jurisdictions. For example, the Utah State Legislature requires that Utah cities allow ADUs in a certain percentage of residentially zoned areas. Defined college towns in Utah, such as Provo, are required by state to allow ADUs in 33% of its residentially owned areas. In requiring a percentage lower than non-college towns, the state recognizes other housing challenges college towns face in housing tens of thousands of college students who make a significant, albeit vibrant, who make up a significant, albeit vibrant, part of our community. The percentage of residentially zoned areas in Provo where ADUs are currently allowed is nearly 48%. Roughly 15% greater than what the state has required in encouraging the use of ADUs in our college town. About a year ago, the Provo council approved an ordinance whereby residents could apply for a special use permit or SUP, effectively enabling them to pursue an ADU for their home in any of Provo's residential zones with the approval of two thirds of their contiguous property owners. A year of experience has allowed us to see where the SUP process falls short and what we can do to improve that delicate balance between growth and the desire to preserve neighborhoods, particularly those already losing families who are unwilling to put down roots in unstable neighborhoods. First, the special use permit program has resulted in mixed zoning or spot zoning in residential neighborhoods, effectively creating, for the length of the permit, arbitrary treatment of a parcel of land by zoning ordinances. Second, a special use permit removes from the city council the legislative role of determining the zoning for an area, basically placing land zoning decisions in the hands of an individual resident in a given neighborhood, again, for the length of the permit. Through a local election, people delegate their authority to the council to make land use decisions. Lastly, the SUP program has left our residents on their own to negotiate with their neighbors in an ADU approval process that I have observed in some cases as very acrimonious, unfortunately, and divisive. I do agree that ADUs have value in the right context and are part of the solution to Provo's current housing challenges. Just two weeks ago, this council. Just two weeks ago, this council took action to simplify the ADU approval process, to streamline enforcement and to reinforce the use of ADUs to address housing needs, to allow residents to remain in their homes longer and to encourage livable neighborhoods. The council amended Provo City Code to update the eligibility to qualify for the elderly person's extra living space ordinance from 65 years of age to 60 years of age, potentially increasing the supply of ADUs in the city and potentially revitalizing older neighborhoods. Furthermore, in April of this year, the council unanimously adopted an ordinance, adding a small section, 44 homes of the foothills neighborhood to the ADU overlay, allowing owners of multiple contiguous properties to have ADUs designated as a permitted use for all subject properties because they acquired the necessary minimum 66% approval from their entire neighborhood. Again, I agree that ADUs are part of the solution to Provost's current housing challenges. A focus of this council remains to increase homeowner occupancy through a balanced mix of home types across the city. However, as it relates to Provost's overall ADU landscape, I believe our council should repeal the special use permit program that is flawed and instead focus on zoning that returns legislative oversight to a careful, thoughtful zoning process that is aligned with neighborhood goals to avoid even temporary spot zoning, that builds more unity within neighborhoods and a diversity of all housing options across the city, and that enforces existing regulations that promote and strengthen ADU options that are legal and well managed.
Any other discussion? Counselor Hoppin?
Appreciate everybody's comments tonight, even the ones I disagree with. Especially you, Doug. Um, so Provost's, according to council staff research, Provo is probably likely the most restricted, has the most restrictive ADU policies in the state. Not a hundred percent confirmed, but according to their, their cursory research. So that being said, we're going from being the most restrictive already and then removing one pathway that has enabled a dozen or two people or homes, I guess, to become ADUs throughout the city. I understand that in some situations, somebody might take advantage of that situation who doesn't really need an ADU for a good reason. But I think it's okay to take the good with the bad sometimes. If two thirds or three fourths of those were for people who are trying to keep their home after a job loss or after a divorce, or somebody who's trying to qualify for home that wouldn't be able to qualify. I think those are valid reasons for people to apply. The great thing about the SUP pathway is it gives neighbors the opportunity to weigh in and say, you know what, this home already has 20 people living there and 10 cars. It's not a great idea to add an ADU there. And so in that situation, probably makes sense. However, in a situation where somebody's a good neighbor, they keep their yard up, they don't overpark, they're quiet. Maybe that makes sense, right? So this pathway provides, the SUP provides that pathway for a common sense approach, uh, to ADUs. I think everyone here would acknowledge, if you've paid attention, how I voted personally in the past, that I've been very conservative on my approach to ADUs in the city. To me, this is a moderate step to enable people to have an ADU in an area when they have that need. And here we are repealing that already being the most, likely being the most restrictive city in the whole state. Some people have mentioned it's not a perfect process. I have a friend who's recently gone through the process and she said it was, it was not fun having to go and, you know, request of your neighbors, um, to have an ADU and she got denied. But when I asked her, so what did you think? She said, well, at least I had a shot. My thoughts on this SUP is that it's not a perfect pathway. It's not perfect, but it's better than no pathway at all for the people who need it. So to repeal it to me just doesn't make sense. Um, people mentioned that they bought homes in specific neighborhoods, knowing that it was going to be a single family neighborhood. How about those people who recently bought homes in neighborhoods, knowing that there was an SUP path and they were going to be able to rent their basement? How do you feel about those people? There's flip side to all of these arguments. People mentioned SUV, don't destroy our neighborhoods. So the SUP pathway has been in place for a little while now. And there have been, according to city staff, no complaints from the SUP pathway ADUs. Likely because there's a process in place to ensure that bad actors don't get the S, the ADU, right? So again, it's a good compromise approach to ADUs. It's interesting to me to hear so many people state that this pathway pits neighbor against neighbor. Yet at the same time, the council recently reratified the approach that allows a whole neighborhood to be changed at once. That also pits neighbor against neighbor. So what's interesting to me is that that's an issue or that's not an issue, but one person going to, you know, five to 10 neighbors or whatever it might be, is an issue. You would rather change the makeup of an entire neighborhood at once based on the majority of that neighborhood. Ultimately, I think the difference is, is that that vote ultimately comes back to the council. And what people don't like about the SUP is that the council doesn't weigh in. I would say that the SUP process, if you take it away and you say, okay, well, somebody just goes and gets a zone change then. First of all, the zone change stays with the home forever. I don't think people want that. I think people like the idea that the SUP is for that specific homeowner and that that specific homeowner can't hand that off to the next person because they might not be the same type of landlord, they might not be the same type of single family, you know, owner, occupied, uh, single family. What you're creating by removing the SUP is you're actually creating spot zoning. Because the SUP is an administrative process that doesn't require a zone change that is permanent. The SUP process is not a spot zone change. So I disagree with that. Another, another, uh, I provided some context, but, um, in the past, in the past meeting, but ultimately in the past few years, the legis, state legislature has placed a lot of, uh, pressure on cities to, uh, to address the housing crisis. One of those things that they have placed a lot of pressure on is to require cities, all cities in Utah, to have a certain percentage of ADUs. I believe it's 75% for all cities except higher than 75%. Oh, thumbs up. Um, 75%. Provo City currently has 49% of our zones that allow ADUs. So if the state were to come in and say, Provo City, you need to be like the rest of the cities, you need to move up 75%. That's effectively citywide because there's a certain number of zones that ADUs just don't work because yard size, parking, home size, et cetera, right? Um, so effectively the state's come, has come into most cities and said, you pretty much have to allow ADUs everywhere. If we remove this SUP for really no good reason, except we don't like that it pits neighbor against neighbor. Okay, well, we have another process that pits neighbor against neighbor. We also enforce through zoning, uh, or our zoning enforcement is primarily through complaints that. So, so did we just stop zoning enforcement because it pits neighbor against neighbor? No. Ultimately, there's some downside to it, but if we remove it for no good reason, really, as far as I can see, any good reason, there's been no complaints, staff hasn't said that this is an issue. Neighbors who don't like it get to weigh in and say, we don't like it. So I, I'm, I'm struggling to understand what the real good reason is that we're repealing it. You might win the battle against the SUP and lose the war against ADUs because the state is likely to use this as addition, to provide additional scrutiny on Provo and say, okay, Provo, you're not being a good actor. You have the most strict ADU policy in the state and yet you're making it more strict when we're asking you guys to be less restrictive. So this is going to, this is going to invite additional legislative scrutiny. So anybody out there who says, we want Provo to be able to maintain control over and have local control over ADUs, you actually should be supporting that we keep the SUP in place. Because if we repeal it, additional legislative scrutiny is going to come. There was recently an article in Salt Lake Tribune. There was also an article in the Daily Herald, I believe, or was it the desert? Desert, Deseret News, I can't, I can't remember. But I have confirmation that state legislators saw those articles. Utah League of City and Towns has weighed in and said, they saw those articles that we have to be very careful about the steps that we take when it comes to ADUs because it will invite additional legislative scrutiny. Long story short, I don't have the votes here to keep this SUP here today, but I wanted to make my thoughts known because I believe this is a mistake. I believe it's going to ultimately lead to Provo losing its autonomy and local control over ADUs. And I ultimately believe that it's just not the right thing to do for people like single moms or people who lost their jobs. And you might say, well, you know, they can go figure something else out. So you would rather displace a family in Provo who is currently in a home than, you know, allow them to just rent their basement and hopefully make ends meet either on an interim basis or long term. Yeah, I think, I think if that were your son who lost his job or your daughter who just got divorced and is trying to keep her home, you might have a different opinion than you might have, than you might be saying today. I guess I've said my piece. I can die in peace now, knowing that I've laid out my thoughts on ADUs or the SUP process of ADUs. Again, I really appreciate all the public comment on both sides of the issue. I love that in Provo, people are engaged. So, um, like I said, even if I don't agree with you, I appreciate that you guys are, are out here and engaged. So, thank you.
Travis, don't die on us.
No, no.
Any other public comment? Um, Counselor Handley?
Uh, yeah, I want to thank, uh, Counselor Garrett for that very eloquent and thoughtful explanation. That's the best I've heard and it was, I would encourage you to write out your comments like that more often. I tried it last week. It's kind of fun, but anyway, um, I really, I really was very, um, that was very thoughtful, was very impressive and helpful because I frankly have been, um, unclear as to some of the logic behind the, the desire to repeal, and that made it a lot more clear to me. Um, I did write out my thoughts two weeks ago and I don't want to rehearse them here, although, um, there's more of you here tonight and I'm kind of wishing I, you know, had waited for two weeks, but I didn't think it was going to get delayed for two weeks. So, um, I just have a couple of quick, um, I hope quick responses to some things that have been brought up. That I think are important to mention and just kind of piggybacking on this idea of college towns. I, I, I too, I'm not sure where we stand statewide, but we are by far the, the lowest percentage of college towns that were given that carve out. In fact, Logan and Orem are already at the 75% uh, uh, level. Uh, they've sort of, I think Logan, um, temporarily tried something a little more, um, modest and then just, uh, went all out, uh, in, in favor of, of where the state wanted, uh, all cities to be. So we're, we're extremely vulnerable, I think, as a, uh, city arguing for exemptions because we're a college town when other college towns have not, um, followed suit. Um, and, and I do think that means we're, we're politically vulnerable with, uh, a repeal. Um, I, I think the single theme that I continue to hear that's behind a lot of opposition to uh, ADUs is that it, it changes the character of a neighborhood. It maybe compromises property values, threatens investments and those kinds of questions. And I, I think maybe I, I just want to stand my ground on one issue. And that's not so much that I disagree with those claims. It's that I think those claims are based on what are perceived to be violations about ADUs. And, uh, Mr. Magleby referenced the, the survey. Um, uh, my sense was that that survey, first of all, I think fifth place is about right. Uh, that's, that's about where we are in terms of the number of housing, uh, units that we approve in the city. Um, ADUs are much lower than, uh, fourth or fifth, uh, and certainly not anywhere near, near the top three. So it's, I don't see this as, I think this is a very modest tool for a very modest, uh, number of high needs. Um, but that said, I think, um, you know, based on my conversations with people in the city, I think most people, when they're reacting to what is an ADU, they, they know the violations more than they know about the, the compliant cases. And so that's what they're, that's what they're often reacting against. And those violations do change the character of a neighborhood and they can threaten property values and they can drive down the quality of a neighborhood. Which is why as a council, we've been unified in our desire to want to improve our enforcement capacities and, and why, in my opinion, a legal pathway, uh, makes a whole lot of sense because those, that invites the people who, who most desperately need it, uh, to do it in the right way. And I think we've heard some very compelling and very moving stories. Casey, uh, DCO, is that how you pronounce your last name? Those stories just, um, gutted me. Um, because if, if there's a complaint about the sort of flexibility of this program, that's precisely why it's valuable is that people who are in, uh, a very unique set of circumstances have a way to address those circumstances in a very reasonable, legal and non-impactful way in their, in their neighborhood. And the idea that we're taking that away just, uh, just kills me. Um, and I hope that we're, we, we don't forget that, that that's what we're, uh, making harder uh, for our citizens to be able to do, to be able to help people out in need and to use our, uh, housing circumstances as a way to, um, bless and, and benefit other people. I said two weeks ago that I really, in many ways, uh, feel very strongly about the value of single family neighborhoods. I live in one, I chose one, uh, for a reason. Um, but I am concerned and I, and I have been all my political life that talking about protecting family neighborhoods is not, um, is not an answer i- if it means that we protect it at the exclusion of worrying about what's happening with the rest of the community. And I would much prefer a different narrative, a way of thinking about as a city, how can we magnify the benefits of family neighborhoods for the most people across our city? That's, that's where I stand politically. That's what I believe in and that's what I hope, um, the American dream can continue to mean for people. It's not something that we protect and keep from other people from having access to. And I think that's what, uh, Mr. Dines, uh, pointed out, that the rising prices, uh, are a direct function of our restrictions. And so to the degree that we're trying that hard to protect something that is in the end going to be available to fewer and fewer people. Uh, I pointed out two weeks ago that even the lowest, lowest salary of the upper middle class cannot afford an average home in Provo at present. So we've got a problem. That's the problem I want to fix. It's not so much, um, uh, you know, uh, out of, out of, certainly not out of any disinterest, not out of any interest in doing any harm to the family neighborhood I live in or the family neighborhoods that the rest of you live in. I happen to live adjacent to the ADU neighborhood of the tree streets. Unfortunately, my street doesn't allow it, but oddly enough, if I throw a rock, I can find a, an ADU not too far from my house. I don't throw rocks at houses, but you get my point. But, but the, the gentleman who spoke earlier about having left the tree streets, I felt like saying, oh, you've left too early. It's too bad because your neighborhood fought for the right to have ADUs require homeownership. And that was the single thing that turned that neighborhood around. Cause I remember specifically, and it was actually your streets and that, that church community was worried about having no children, no youth in their program. And that has completely turned around because of that, of that policy. So I have, and I have always insisted that the tree streets is our best local example. We don't even have to go that far. We can go to Orem and look at what's happening in Orem where it's citywide. Instead of speculating about what, what, uh, is going to happen, we, we already know we have some very, uh, good local examples of what can happen. So anyway, I just felt the need to say some of those things. I certainly respect all of you for coming and I know many of you, and I know many of you on both sides of this issue. And I, and I hope nothing I've said ever has ever meant any disrespect to any of you. Uh, it's something I feel strongly about, but it's certainly something I can agree to disagree and move forward as a council, work with these wonderful people, uh, with whom I have disagreements, but whom I love and, and, and privileged to work with. So thank you.
Any other public comment? Oh, yeah, sorry. I'm getting tired.
I am too.
Rachel Whipple.
Thank you. This has been a really interesting thing for me to think about, partly because I didn't really love the SUP process when we implemented a year ago. We did it as a trial thing to see how it would work. And the feedback that we got when it came back was that the percentage of neighborhood or neighbor approval was too high, and it made it unwieldy. It wasn't fulfilling the objectives of the program. It really should be reduced to 50%. And I'm a little confounded that we would implement a piece of legislation with the intention of seeing how it worked and then come back and revisit it. And when it comes back, we don't take the advice of the people who are actually implementing it and amend it to make it better based on their recommendation. Instead, what we're saying is we're just going to check this whole thing. So I'm a little, I'm a little confounded by that. But we've also found that there are problems. You know, this idea of neighbor animosity has happened. We have had some good stories where this has become a nice little yimby thing where you can have neighbors coming together and saying, yeah, we'll support that. Or we have something like, oh, what was your name? Callie, Callie Prater, who's only had her house since June. She hasn't had enough time to get to know her neighbors to even ask about getting this, but it sounded like she hoped to, right? That was one of her expectations in buying the house, was that she'd be able to establish herself in the neighborhood and then be able to use this as a tool to have that flexibility in her property. So I recognize that there are problems with this legislation, and I'd be happy to repeal it for the problems. I mean, that makes sense to me. However, I also have to acknowledge that we are not operating in a vacuum. The problems of housing affordability, housing supply, and accessory dwelling units are a nationwide problem. And there are different jurisdictions who are approaching this in different ways. They're offering different solutions, and our state legislature is looking at that and saying, well, let's apply some of those here to our states. And unfortunately, one of the things that we have seen is states preempting local control on these issues. And I do not want to invite state preemption ever. I think that our best decisions are made right here by us with the input from our neighbors. And I've, I recognize that even though this pathway has only been used a handful of times, the narrative that will be spun by us withdrawing this pathway does not make us look good as a city. And that could be the invitation that I do not want to be offering to the legislature, partly because even though I would like to see ADUs more widely through the city, I'm concerned that the state legislature would do things like changing our parking requirements or changing our setbacks or other, other parts of our zoning code that we've built to ensure the lack of nuisance, the habitability, the quality of life. I'm worried that the state would plow over those as it preempts us if it thinks that we're not working creatively to solve this particular problem. Because of that, I've looked at what our concerns are, why we want to have these ADUs. And one of them is this financial flexibility for people who are wanting to buy a home, but also for people who are already in their homes. And the extra living space code that we already have in 1434450 isn't called an ADU, but it functions as one. And it allows by right, people who are over the age of 60 now to use their property in this way. So I would propose that if we want to get rid of this in order to send a signal to our state that we are trying to find real solutions to our real problems that our particular people are facing, we should expand that extra living space thing in a couple of ways. One thing that this does is addresses Dave Connect's concern that this is a particular permitted use for the applicant. It does not run with the land, right? Just as the extra living space does for our older people. But I think we could certainly expand that to be an income qualified thing as well. So somebody who owns their home but has, for some reason or other, fallen on hard times like a divorce or a loss of job or going back to school, and they meet a certain percentage of the AMI, the average median income, they should be able to do a similar process as our elderly homeowners to say, yes, I want to be able to rent out a part. Here's my income verification. And I don't know what standard we'd set that at, like what percentage of AMI. But that would keep people in their homes. And the reason that's good is the home that you already have is probably the most affordable home you're going to get, especially if you bought it before the interest rates rent up. I'm a divorce attorney, and so I help people run these numbers all the time when they're looking at dividing their assets and one person wants to stay in the home. If they don't have to refinance that home, then that's the most affordable thing they're going to be in, right? Because if they have to sell the home, the odds are, whatever they rent, even if it's significantly smaller, the rent is going to be higher than the existing mortgage. But usually in a divorce, you have to do some sort of refinance to take the other person off the mortgage or to pay out their portion of equity. So the cost of being in there are going up some. If you could rent out a portion and keep your home, you've got a stable home for a family. This proposal would do nothing for somebody who's looking to buy a home, who would want to be counting on that income in order to qualify for it. It only addresses half of that problem. But the advantage I see to it is that it would address it in such a way that this would be a by right thing. It would be for the people who really need it. They don't have to get their neighbor's approval. It would be a more streamlined process. And they're the people who are already there. So if, if there is really council determination that we want to jettison the special use pathway, and like I say, there's good reason for that, then I would propose that we look at expanding the extra living space to accommodate more people so that we can send this message to our state legislators that we are aware of a problem, but we are trying to solve it in the very best way for our neighbors and for the people who are living here now and the people who need to live here. I will just add one more thing. Many of the problems that have been mentioned in your comments are problems that have preexisted the special use pathway. They're, they're not, there's not evidence that they are related to the few units that were approved on this. And we do need to do more work on our parking enforcement and over occupancy. We, as a council, have recognized that. We have conveyed that to development services, to zoning, and we've gotten a little bit more fussy about making them follow up with us on things like that as well. So this is one of our big concerns, and we are working to hold the administration accountable to this so that we know that effective tools are being used to allay these concerns. Yeah. So in my perfect world, let's just go back to Rachel's fantasy land. We would expand ADU rights just as a property right. I know there's not support for that. So we've taken that off the table. The second one is I would change the SUP pathway to reduce it from 66% to 50% because that was the recommendation of our administration who actually implemented the program. I don't know that there's support for that either. So my third front is that I would propose that we amend the extra living space code to add an income qualification provision, knowing that that only helps another small portion, but it is a significant portion, and it would help stabilize our neighborhoods.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak before Travis speaks again? Counselor Craig Christensen?
So I was the one that pushed this back two weeks. That made me very unpopular with a lot of people up here. And the reason I did is because this is an important issue. I mean, who sitting in the audience can't see both sides of this? Can you see both sides? I can. And so this isn't a matter of like who's right and who's wrong. I wish it was that simple. It's not. The reason I asked to continue, and I appreciate my colleagues supporting me in a two-week push is because in the last two weeks, I have talked to dozens of people to try to understand how this should be decided. Because it's not an easy yes or no. Again, all the things that I've said, I'd say, yep, good point, yep, good point, every single one of them. The question for me comes down to who should decide? And my answer to that is I think neighborhoods should decide. I'm okay with pocket neighborhoods. I'm okay with big neighborhoods. The, again, I see the value in ADUs, and that's why we have approved ADUs. I don't see the value of the current process. So this isn't an anti-ADU approach. To me, it's a who should be making that decision. And I think neighborhoods should make that decision. Now, you can disagree with me, but I was elected by neighbors who wanted me to represent their views. So I went and talked to them. I went the extra mile. I've talked to staff. I've talked to city officials. I've talked to different agencies. I've got as much information as I can. And I come down on this should be something neighborhoods decide, not individuals. So that's why I will be voting to repeal the SUP tonight.
Any other comment? Travis?
Ultimately, though, we don't give the neighborhoods the opportunity to decide. So are you saying future legislation, I guess? Because in, in the current pathway that we have for a neighborhood, the signatures don't actually mean anything. The council ultimately decides, so you're not actually allowing the neighborhood to decide. But that's neither here nor there. We can argue that later, or you can comment on it after. So Counselor Whipple, was that a motion? Okay, I'll make a motion that we leave the SUP in place for the time being, and that we ask council staff to explore a income-based or hardship-based pathway that is administrative so that we eliminate this neighbor against neighbor, allow it to be an administrative pathway that's based on, on income or economic hardship or something like that. So we would lead that up to city staff and council staff to, to look into the option. And in the meantime, the SUP stays in place until we can bring that back to the council for further discussion. I think what that does is it enables us to still have this pathway in the meantime. It doesn't leave people hanging that were planning to rent their home, hopefully, or at least apply or try to get that ADU SUP, but also solve some of the problems that have been expressed with, you know, we don't want the neighbors to decide, or pitting neighbors against neighbors, et cetera. It seems like a pretty good meet in the middle approach that also addresses most of my concerns around helping people to get ADUs that are facing economic hardship in one way or another. So that's my motion. It was a long motion. You can just take the actual part of the motion that is, you know, the beginning part.
Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second Travis's motion that we keep the SUP in place for now while we wait for staff to bring us a recommendation on how to do a hardship pathway.
Income-based or?
Economic-based income, yeah.
George?
I, I am very interested in exploring that, but I'm not comfortable coupling it with this. I think we should just vote on this, get this vote over with, and then if we want to explore that, we can do that. But I'm, I'm not comfortable mixing the two.
And I second that.
So George, are you making a substitute motion in which we would only instruct staff to explore an income and hardship-based option?
Yes, that is my substitute motion.
Do you second that?
No, I thought he was saying something.
Okay. Well, he was saying something different, but we were trying to clarify. I would second George's motion. So this, do we deal with the substitute motion now, and then we can move out? Okay.
Comment on the motion. So the problem with that is we don't know if we're ever going to bring back any sort of something that the council can agree on. And so we might be killing the SUP today and not having a path moving forward. And we don't know how long this process will take to try to explore a economic hardship or income-based pathway as well. And as I mentioned, it might never get there. So I don't, I don't support that because ultimately it doesn't leave a pathway in place in the meantime.
Well, I certainly agree that the pathway should stay, but the votes are not there, and I don't see the point of coupling this vote with that. It just seems like the chances of us having that discussion are actually fewer, reduced. Exploring an income-based option, I think, should be its own standalone motion and issue that we explore over time. It's going to take, that, that seems like a complicated and important enough issue that it's going to, it is going to take us some time. And I do agree, I would prefer that the special use permit stay in place, but I don't, I don't see that.
Well, I guess what I was doing was trying to make it so that we keep the SUP in place and hopefully find something appealing to those who are opposed to it as in current form. And you can still make a motion if the, if my motion dies, you can still make a motion after the fact to say, okay, well, now that that's didn't work, let's go ahead and let's direct council staff to explore this. So I'm.
Is that fair enough, Brian? Can that happen?
Yes, if you, I mean, in some ways, it's really just an order of operations, right? I mean, if you, if you withdrew your motion, then Travis's motion would be, Counselor Hoben's motion would be voted on. And he is correct that if that motion failed, then another motion could be made about the hardship issue.
And because he's coupled them, that motion isn't actually on this item.
Well, I mean, it is.
Right, because we'd have to go back to the original motion, which would be to vote on number four.
Well, yeah. So here's, here's the three ways. There's probably more combinations in this, but here's the three ways that I can see this playing out. If your substitute, if you go forward with your substitute motion and it passes, there still has to be a vote on the implied motion, which could or could not reject the SUP, right? So that's one path. If you withdraw your motion, we'll vote on Counselor Hoben's motion, and if it passes, then we're done for tonight because because the implied motion would be set aside until somebody come, until council staff comes back on the other issue. If it fails, the implied motion is still on the table and will be voted on, and you could also have a motion to.
I will withdraw my motion then.
All right. Any more comments on Travis's motion? All right, let's vote on it. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay, no. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
No.
Counselor Christensen?
No.
Counselor Garrett?
No.
That does not pass, 4-3. I have some comments on the original motion.
All right. We, first of all, it's really interesting watching all these comments, and it's really interesting watching everyone's faces and their rolling eyes and their shrugs and their disdain for their fellow human beings. And what just makes me so sad is that people have such low respect for other people of different opinions than them. They literally think less of them. They literally look down on them and think they're superior and they are better, and that their opinion matters more and that what they want matters more. People are allowed to want to live on farmland. They're allowed to want to live in a single-family neighborhood. They're allowed to want ADUs. You're allowed to want high rises. They're allowed to want urban living and mixed commercial. They're allowed to want whatever they want. That's the beauty of it. And we have lots of options in the city. We opened the whole West Side to ADUs, and the West Side, there's about 1,000 acres that are undeveloped. There could be 1,000 extra acres of ADUs. And what's beautiful about that is that they will be built with the expectation of ADUs. Everyone who moves into them will know their ADUs.
Everyone who moves into them will know their ADUs. And, um, it won't be changed for them twenty, thirty, forty-five, two years later after they've bought their home. Um, all of our growth pretty much will be in, in ADU allowed areas in the city. We are close to fifty percent already and that doesn't include the homes that are, um, with the elderly living space, which we just lowered to sixty plus. And all the family that lives with people. I have a house next to me that has six generations, it's not six generations, six individual families in it. A parent, a couple, husband and wife. And there are five children who are all married with children. That's legal. So there are five different families living in that five or six. I'm not totally positive there's for sure four, I mean, there's for sure five, but there might be six living in that house and that's great, works well for them. Um, so there's a lot of, there is a lot of extra living that is going on that isn't even accounted for, right? And when you consider the small percentage we have of single family homes, we are unique. It's just a reality, per capita, we are unique. And our big shortage is four plus bedroom homes. And taking one home and splitting it into two is not increasing ha, the housing space. It's not increasing square footage. It's taking one home and turning it into two. And where we do have a shortage of four plus bedroom homes and where we do have a shortage of compared to other cities where families can grow and have bigger homes, we have a shortage there. It's just, it's just true. And, um, I took some notes as people were talking about things. What did I write here? Um, Travis mentioned the editorial in the Salt Lake Tribune. It is interesting that it was written by a person who's living in an illegal duplex. Um, we are the only city who tried this. This was really unique, this SUP. We're the only city in the state that tried it. We did try it. We hope that it would work well. It has created significant discord in neighborhoods, that's just a fact. I have heard multiple times and I got multiple calls today about it, of the discord and frustration felt in neighborhoods. People have called multiple times, not just today, but other times calling me to say, hey, you know, someone came, I put my name down, I didn't want to, they, I felt coerced. Please, I don't want you to count my name, just take it off. How awkward is that? It's awkward all around for everyone. Um, this is, I don't like the pitting of neighbor against neighbor. It's definitely not ideal. It is flawed legislation in that perception. And this, and the whole blackmailing us that it's state, you know, the state's going to be, we're, you know, going to use this as a weapon or to bully you. It's just interesting. It's, it means twelve houses. It's not very many houses. Um, twelve of those houses were my best friends, two of them. They used the SUP. And it was wonderful for them. It was great. It was really helpful. One is a widow. And one is, she lives alone because her husband lives in Iowa. I don't understand, but so they, she's alone most of the time with her son. And so she got one for someone to live in her basement. She was in a large house. So it worked out really great for two people that I know. They had no drama with getting their signatures. It went well. They, um, but other, other neighborhoods, it's been really contentious. Um, I love it that the women who lived on Ash and Eric Chase, they love their ADU neighborhoods and that's great. They should have that. They should be able to live in their ADU neighborhoods and love it. I'm glad they have that. And other people who love their single family neighborhoods that don't allow ADUs, they're allowed to love that. And they shouldn't be looked down on, just like people wanting ADU neighborhoods shouldn't be looked down on. Um, we can want different things. We can value different things, we have different priorities in our life. That's, that's the way it goes. It's healthy, it's normal. Um, I don't know, I wrote a bunch of stuff on my computer that I'm not going to read. My son opens his mission call in forty-five minutes, so I hope I'm home by then. Um, but for me, this comes down to bad legislation. It comes back, it comes down to causing chaos and contention in areas. And I do have an issue with changing the zoning of a neighborhood. Um, that's why I love it that so much of our empty land can be developed with ADUs with the expectation of that. People can know what they're moving into, they can design it like they want with an ADU or without an ADU. And I'm, and that's fantastic. I think that is the ideal way for this to happen. Our percentages are just going to go up. They are not going to go down. And I think that's a good thing. Um, we have eleven hundred units that we have entitled that are not being built yet. It, we are, that's not because of us. It's because of the market. It's because of financing. It's because of supply chain issues. It's because of the cost of supplies. That's why they're not being built. This isn't because of the planning commission or the city council. That's eleven hundred units. Now we, as I said, we have about a thousand units, thousand acres on the west side to be developed. But we aren't, you know, a harem in or a, a pace, and pace is probably getting built out already, I don't know. But we are not, we are an area that is more built out, right? We're surrounded by mountains, we're surrounded by the lake. We do have a limit. And I don't espouse this induced demand idea that we have to continually make space and housing units at the cost of quality of life. We need to balance it. It's all about balance. Because we have a shortage of four plus bedroom homes, I worry about that. If we didn't have a shortage of four plus bedroom homes, I wouldn't worry about it as much. So there's just a lot of factors here. And I love it that somebody came out. I love it that you commented. I appreciate your emails. And I appreciate all the thoughts of my fellow counselors. Are there any more comments? All right, let's take a vote. Oh, Counselor Gary Garrett.
Just one clarification from Brian. I can't remember if two weeks ago we addressed all of the pending applications from this past year or if there is any more action that needs to be taken.
Um, I'm trying to remember now exactly what the motion was last week. I did draft additional language, um, and that I have ready. In fact, if you could put that up, Michael, just so we can see it. Because I don't remember exactly how the motion went down last week to continue it. I think the best thing to do would be to, to revisit that today. And if, if this language reflects the will of the council, then I would suggest somebody make a motion to add this language to the ordinance. So this proposed language makes clear that the, that the pending legislation section of the code does not apply to this ordinance as passed and that the effective date is the effective date and that no applications submitted before the effective date are affected by the change. That was discussed at some length in the last meeting. Uh, I don't remember there being a formal decision on it, so it's not in, it's not in the ordinance that the implied motion applies to. So if you want this to be the case, it, it would require a motion to add it.
I'd like to include that in a motion on the, um, pending ordinance.
So a motion to add the, the language on the screen.
I'll second that.
And this would follow the same process the last one where, at the moment, you're just voting on whether to add this language. If that passes, then there would be a vote on the implied motion to approve the amended ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Brian. All right, we will take a vote on the motion to make a start date of this and to allow anyone who's put an application before then to be processed in the respective way that they are processed. All right, Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
That passes seven oh. Next, an implied motion. We will take a vote on the original implied motion. Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor.
Sorry, sorry. Just because this came up in a, in a long past situation that nobody but me will remember. Just because you said the original implied motion, I just want to make clear that we're voting on the implied motion as now amended.
I'm going to take a vote on the implied motion as now amended. Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple?
No.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Nope.
Counselor Hoben?
No.
And that passes four, three. The following items, don't you read that? The continued?
Uh, no, well, um, you don't need to read the items. You could just say that the rest of the items on the agenda have been continued. I would note before we move off of this item, because of the prior discussion, that now is the time to make any motions about this subject before we move on, if there are any to be made.
And I would like to do that. I would like to move that we direct our council staff to look at possible expansions to the code fourteen point thirty-four point four fifty on extra living space to see if we can add an economic qualification or hardship qualification for that.
Do you have a date by which you want that by?
I know we've got budget season coming up and we've got holidays coming up now. So do you think a two or three month time period would be appropriate?
It's appropriate with whatever timing you want. That sounds great.
March first. So coming back, no later than the first council meeting in March. That would be a work meeting discussion.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we'll take, any comment? Any discussion on the motion? All right, we will take a vote. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
No.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
No.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay? Yes. That passes four, three. No.
Five, two.
Thank you, George. We will be continuing the rest of the agenda. And if there's an objection, we'll now adjourn the purposeful council by unanimous consent.
Thank you, Teresa.
So excited for your son.
No, it was exciting.